Good evening. All the meetings in order is with great respect and humility that we acknowledge and honor the lands of the Seminole people. The Seminole people maintain their profound, unique and spiritual connection to the land for indigenous traditions, teachings, stewardship and expressions of reciprocity. And a few items to get to before we move on with the agenda. First, we have some new faces around the board table this evening and in our room today joining us. So just like to start off by acknowledging we have a new trustee joining us this evening, Tim Harris, that will be sworn in this evening. On behalf of the board, I'd like to congratulate you, Tim, on being elected. We're pleased to have the honor of walking into the board and are looking forward to being at full strength again. Thank you, Tim, for being here with us this evening. Also, we have our interim, I'm sort of sure Pete what we're calling you these days, but Pete has come in as our sort of temporary superintendent to help the board with the transition. Pete Langstrat comes with the met amount of experience in doing the work of superintendent and also doing a lot of work with our board over the last number of years. So welcome, Pete. Thank you for being here this evening. But last but not least, at the back of the room, we have our new superintendent, Robin Gray, joining us this evening. We'll officially begin with the district on November the 18th. She comes to us from the Couch and Valley School Districts with about five years' experience as a superintendent, a lot of experience as well with our district here in Nanaimo-Layton Public Schools. She's with us for more than a couple of decades. So we're very pleased to welcome her to the position and back to the district and home, I hope. So thank you for joining us this evening. Also, I want to acknowledge that we are wearing our orange shirts this evening in recognition of the National Day for Truth and Reconciliation, which is Monday, September the 30th. The National Day for Truth and Reconciliation honors the children who never returned home and the survivors of residential schools, as well as their families and communities. Orange Shirt Day is an Indigenous-led grassroots commemorative day intended to raise awareness of the individual, family and community intergenerational impacts of residential schools, a reminder to communities that every child matters. The orange shirt is a symbol of the stripping away of culture, freedom and self-esteem experienced by Indigenous children over generations. Acknowledging the painful history and the ongoing impacts and legacy of residential schools is a vital component of the reconciliation process. Both days call on us to recognize that historical and ongoing wrongs perpetuated against Indigenous people and the legacy of colonialism that is still in place today. This Friday, when I'm with the Laysman Public School, students and staff will be wearing orange shirts and taking part in activities and events to listen to the truth about the history of residential schools and to think about actions we can take to support reconciliation. I encourage everyone in our communities to take time on Friday, the statutory holiday on Monday, to listen, learn and commit to personal actions to support reconciliation. And then lastly, before we move on, I have some good news to share, which is I want to share regarding the additional out of classroom hours for our valuable education assistance. Beginning on October 1st, 2024, the district and QP have agreed under LOU 18 to fund one additional hour outside of the classroom for all continuing regular EAs who are currently receiving 25 hours or less per week. At this time, the district is also in the position to provide separate funding for temporary replacement 25-hour EAs to also receive the additional hour outside of the classroom as well, bringing all baseline elementary EAs to 27 hours per week or 5.4 hours per day. I want to express my gratitude to QP and to district staff for working together collaboratively to achieve the goal. I know we all were working really hard on this and recognize the valuable contributions and of our critical members of our school community, education assistants. I acknowledge that sometimes there are processes that are imposed on us and we must work through these together. But tonight's news is a testament to the commitment of both QP and the district to reach an agreement as soon as possible. The new hours will come into effect next week on Tuesday, October 1st. Thank you, Jeff Vertanen, QP president and district staff, for your diligent work on this. This agreement directly supports student-staff wellness and the Nanaimo-Layton Public Schools. So thank you, everyone, to make it's. So we'll move on to item two, the oath of office.
Great. Thank you, Chair. And so I get the honor of part of the Secretary Treasurer. And so the school act allows me to swear in our trustees. And so I want to congratulate Tim Harris, Mr. Harris, for the next 30 seconds. And then it'll be trustee Harris after that. And with respect to the requirements that the school act requires, an oath to be sworn. And so Mr. Harris, trustee Harris, has received this. And yeah, if you're okay with that. And so, so after, I'm going to say one line and then you'll repeat it with your name. And then you'll read the remainder of the trustee oath of office, which is issued by the Ministry of Education. So it'll be I, and then your name, you solemnly affirm. So.
I, Tim Harris, do solemnly affirm.
And then read the remainder.
I'm qualified to hold office as a trustee in the Nanaimo-Layton Public School District and meet the trustee qualification requirements set out in the school act. I have not by myself or any other person knowingly contravened the school act respecting vote buying, intimidation or other election offenses in relation to my election as a trustee. I will abide by the school act and I will faithfully perform the duties of my office and will not allow any private interest to influence my conduct in public matters. I will comply with the requirements of the school act that relate to conflict of interest. And in particular, I will comply with the requirements relating to disclosure of pecuniary and indirect pecuniary interest in the matter.
Congratulations. You are officially a trustee. And so if you could sign. In addition, in school district 68, our trustees at the time they take their oath also sign acknowledgement that they received and read the code of conduct. And so received and read the code of conduct.
Congratulations, Tim. Thank you. Moving on, we have no transfer of items to the open agenda this evening. We have no additions. Sorry, are there any additions, deletions or changes in order? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve the agenda? Anya, and I think it's Tom first, Tom, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor? Very cute. Moving on to the approval of the minutes, the suggested motion is that the minutes from the regular Board of Education meeting, although on August 28th, 2024, be adopted. Do you remember? Anya? There, sorry, any? Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor? Very, thank you. Moving on to the section 72.3 report, that the section 72.3 report in the special closed Board of Education meeting on August 26th, 2024, September 11th, 2024, and September 12th, 2024, be received. Move by Tom, seconded by Chantel. Any discussion? Seeing none, motion out. All in favor? Question carries. Thank you. Move on to announcements and reminders.
Chair, with your pleasure, I'd like to add one to the announcements and reminders for tomorrow's event. Okay, wonderful. Maybe Smalls.
Go ahead.
Tomorrow in the late at midnight morning, I believe it's 11:00 AM.
10:30.
10:30. I would have been late then. Thank you. We are having a celebration of one of our own, Mr. Kasperk, who won Olympic gold and everyone's invited, the whole public. Are they invited, Mark? Saroxum Stadium. Awesome.
Thanks. Keep me on the way to it.
Thanks. Thanks for reminding us. That's an important reminder. So moving on, we have our education committee meeting, October 2nd, 2024. That's followed by the business committee meeting on October 9th and the Board of Education on October 23rd. The National Day for Truth and Reconciliation is the statutory holiday, which falls on September the 30th. And that's followed by Thanksgiving, which is also a statutory holiday on October 14th. And we have non-instructional days on, actually this one, October 25th. So move on to presentations. Our first presentation is from the Gabriel Soccer Association. Hopefully I say your name correctly. Jesse, what will be Jesse there?
And my name is Glenn Murphy.
Yeah, hey, thank you, Glenn. I know this, before you begin, I'm just going to hand it over to our Secretary Treasurer just to remind the trustees of our policy with respect to presentations. Thank you.
Sure, and just as people, a lot of new faces in the room. So we're going to try to take a moment to go over our policies before we get to the subject, no confusion. So our policy 2.6, which governs our board meetings, addresses presentations. So it states that an individual or delegation will be limited to 10 minutes duration with a brief session of questions and clarification, where questions by trustees or standing committee members at the conclusion of a presentation. And the other aspect to note, I think it's very important for folks that are presenting, is 4.1.8 states following a presentation to a standing committee only, it is the prerogative of the standing committee to decide the course of action to be taken on items presented. So essentially, it's kind of a bit of a message to say normally decisions don't come immediately this evening. If the board was going to deal with it, they'd likely discuss the issue on a committee. Just to present that. You have 10 minutes.
Okay, thank you very much. My name is Glenn Murphy. And I'm a longtime teacher in the district and now retired and longtime soccer coach. And so I'm speaking here on behalf of the Gabriel Soccer Association. Our hope this evening is to raise concerns regarding the management and allocation of field time, the upkeep of the facilities and the need for continued investment in maintaining these spaces. Our association has been committed to fostering youth soccer in our community for nearly 30 years, using the Gabriel Soccer, our school field for games and practices since the mid 1990s. Unfortunately, the situation regarding the field's usage and conditions deteriorated in recent years. And we believe it is crucial to address the following issues. First of all, I do want to say this, that if this comes across as in any way negative, it's not intended. We feel really positive about the relationship we have had with the school district and their use of the field. So and we're hoping that that continues. So if it does come across, it's just clumpiness on my part. It's not intended negatively. So here's the history. For nearly three decades, the Gabriel Soccer Field has been integral to the soccer programs run by the Gabriel Soccer Association, serving the needs of approximately 70 youngsters each year, which represents about 40% of the school-aged children on the island. This sport plays a vital role in our community, especially as there are few organized sports for youth on Gabriel. There were a few organized sports for youth on Gabriel before soccer programs began. Soccer has helped to reduce the amount of unsupervised free time for our youth, offering healthy, structured activities that keep them engaged both on and off the island. In about 2002, the Gabriel Recreation Association had $40,000 available for sports-related infrastructure. This amount was matched by the school district at that time. And both groups worked together to install an underground sprinkler system for the Gabriel Elementary School field. So consequently, we've had a lovely field for the last 20 years. And second point, decline in field conditions and mismanagement. Until a couple of years ago, the Gabriel Soccer Association enjoyed an excellent relationship with District 68 with unrestricted access to the school field and gym when it was not booked by others. However, problems began around 2022 when the school field sprinkler system broke and it remained unrepaired for two summers. This lack of maintenance caused significant damage to the field. This resulted in the field being closed to community use for eight months until September of 2023, with the field being reseated, top dressed, the part was replaced, it was watered, it was looking good. Upon reopening in September 2023, our soccer association was informed that the grass was still fragile, limiting us to two practices a week and one game on the weekend. A difficult, but not impossible arrangement for a group of about 70 kids. By December of 2023, halfway through our season, we were informed that the field would be closed again until April. So now this is halfway through the season. We've still got another half of the season to go. And now we have no field to play on. And in reality, the field stayed closed until September of 2024. So now, as of September 24, we're told that we can only practice two days per week with one game on the weekend, which remains difficult. This jeopardizes our season once again, just as it did in 2023, when several home games had to be canceled. Again, this creates some difficulty, but it's not insurmountable. Currently, we have two, have teams in two different leagues, the Upper Island League and a regional league. One league plays on Saturdays and the other on Sundays. So the one day for games makes things difficult, not impossible. We're willing to figure out ways that we can make this happen, but it is, it's a challenge. But the hardest for us is the one where the field could be completely closed from December to the end of April, which gives us no field to play on. Gabriel Soccer Association and the broader Gabriel community are willing to assist with maintaining the field and managing bookings responsibly alongside the school's activities. Our community's goal is to work collaboratively to ensure that the field remains in good condition while providing adequate access for our school soccer programs and other community activities. As an association, we're concerned about the condition of the school field. We decided to invest the $40,000 in the school field for the benefit of the Soccer Association and the school children. I was a teacher at the school at that time. When, when the weather conditions are poor, we cancel games. And finally, we were the ones who offered to stop practicing on the field. We informed the facilities and said, the field looks rough, we will stop practicing on it. And so when it, because it was getting too worn down. So my point there is that we're with you. We want the field to be good. We'll do whatever we can to make it good. And we're not, we're not going to play when it looks like it's doing down to the field. We, we simply do not have the same resources as larger communities. And we really appreciate it when school district 68 has in the past taken this into consideration. At this time, however, our sports program cannot be certain whether we have a field to play on or not. Our teams participate in leagues run by the Upper Island Soccer Association and by Nanaimo United FC. Those two organizations have deadlines when they set their schedules. And as we've been uncertain about field availability over the last two years, you can imagine the predicament this creates for us. We're seeking a constructive dialogue on how we can move forward together, ensuring the needs of both the school and the broader Gabriel community. Are both met, sorry. And we are aware of ongoing discussion. Now, this gets into our dreams, long-term dreams thing. We're aware of ongoing discussions with the Regional District of Nanaimo about field management. But it is crucial that Gabriel's needs be met in the meantime. Unlike communities like Nanaimo, where youth soccer players have access to multiple fields, Gabriel only has one viable option. Our small island community deserves equitable access to well-maintained facilities as it directly affects the health, well-being and development of our youth. Given the growing demand for soccer and other recreational activities, we believe our community requires access in the future to at least five fields in good standing to match the level of access enjoyed by others in our community. In the long term, we envision the development of a comprehensive multipurpose center for Gabriel Island. This facility would include multiple soccer fields, a gymnasium, a swimming pool, a dog park, a gardening center, pickleball courts and both indoor and outdoor activity areas. Such a center would greatly enhance the quality of life on the island, providing a hub for sports, recreation and community engagement. Those are great dreams. Right now, the only first facility, thank you, the only facility we have is the Gabriel School Field. And that's what's keeping us going. So yes, we have dreams, but right now we really need your help. We urge the district, school board, to recognize the importance of these issues and to engage in collaborative dialogue with the Gabriel community. Our aim is to find mutually beneficial solutions that support both youth sports and the well-being of our community. We look forward to your response and to working together on a path forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mark. Are there any questions for the presenter? Can I make a motion? Thank you for your presentation.
Well, do you want to stand here or?
No, I'm going to make a motion. And if everyone decides that it's a good motion, then we're off and running. If it's not, then we might have a discussion.
Thanks, Chair. I'd like to make a motion that we direct staff to make a report on the current conditions of the field, detailing the state of the field and identifying areas requiring attention and have that back in three days.
So to be clear, are you asking for a staff report to come to, say, the business committee? Either that or the long-range facilities planning committee, either or? I don't know if it's inappropriate, just appropriate to bring that to the business committee?
Sure.
Yes, I am. Okay. Karen, did you get that?
Can you repeat what you wanted again?
Sure. The current field conditions, detailing the state of the field and identifying areas requiring attention. Just give Karen a moment, make sure that we understand, or we may ask a second.
Add some color to your, you have, go through the chair, I'm sorry.
Sorry, could I add some color to the motion?
That's a good question.
It's a, it's just an outline of where we're at with the field. We'll ask our staff for that.
Yeah.
Can you possibly read that to us, Karen?
So the Board of Education of School District 68 and Nanaimo-Layton Direct Staff to make a report to the Business Committee of the current state of the field and areas of requirement from Gabriel Island.
Okay. Does that capture what you were asking for, Mark? Yes, thank you, Chair. Start a seconder.
I'm seconding it, but I have quite of information before I do that for the mover of the motion. If that's okay. So through you, Chip, through the chair, Mark, is the point of that to also seek some input from staff on what's? Like, I guess I'm looking at, are we looking also for solutions to the concerns brought forward by the presenters? Or is that, would that be a future motion depending on? Because I would like a bit more. I'd also like to know, to know what the concerns are been around allowing youth to field. I'd like to hear.
So we started debating a motion that hasn't been seconded.
Yeah.
So we need to follow through with the motion that's on the table. And if it gets a seconder, then we can debate it. And if it doesn't, then we can have a different motion if someone wants some of that. So we have the motion. Is that a hand seconded? So it's been seconded by Chantel. So is there any discussion? Okay, I've started listing.
I'd like to make an amendment to the motion. I'd like to add. Collaboratively, work collaboratively, collaboratively with the Gabriel Soccer Association to discuss the the issues with the field or what, however, it just needs to be added in collaboratively. Just the piece that I would like. I think that's what Tanya was actually alluding to.
Okay, so I'll see if Ms. Matthews can.
Just give me a.
Get all the motions. I need you now. So we're just referring to our policy and the options outlined in policy are referring the item to a future standing committee with a report. I think that's what we're asking for, is a report. For the item to staff for investigation and a report. Make a recommendation to a regular special meeting board. Yeah, so it needs to get to the standing committee before we're able to do those things.
Thanks for making an amendment.
So I would suggest the most appropriate thing to do with the board to go through if that's okay. Otherwise, we would refer this to the Business Committee for further discussion. So we have a motion, we have an amendment that's on, that's been worked on right now by Ms. Matthews. Once we get her back, we can see if there's a second.
Okay, then the motion is to provide a, staff to provide a report. So you want staff to work collaboratively with Gabriel Association to provide the report? Like to work together for the response?
You can start, please, just second.
Okay, so should I need the?
No, second, yes.
Okay. Um, I would like to retract my amendment.
Oh, all right. Okay, so, okay, so that wasn't seconded. So maybe, Scotty, would you please read the emergency motion?
The Board of Education of School District Number 68 and Nanaimo-Layton Direct Staff to provide a report to the Business Committee and the current state of the field at Gabriel Island, including, oh, sorry, to Business Committee on this playfield at Gabriel Island, including the current state and required areas for.
Okay, so that's the motion that's been seconded. I'm going to go back to the discussion. And did you want to just to say something? Because you did have your hand up.
I'm just wondering about the time, how pressing it is when it comes to time, like, you might go back and forth possibly, like, what does it look like in regards to the pressingness of the issue?
I'll bring that to.
Yeah. So and just from a procedural perspective, the board has a motion on the floor now. So normally, the member of the community wouldn't be able to respond once, if there's a motion on the floor. So that's the type of question that normally, just kind of ask me generic questions of the presenter would be one of the ones that gets asked. What I can say from the presentation, from my knowledge of the, of the field, is that it is true that the district staff would be contemplating closure the same way that we did last year over, over that winter season. So I think we're probably, not as much access as they want, but I think that we're good, at least till the next Business Committee. If the report came at that time and some kind of action was taken to make a change, like, to change, I would suggest to you that there's sufficient time to make that change from now in the case of this committee, which is two weeks, hence a little bit of whatever.
Okay, so anyone else want to discuss the motion?
I am going to support motion. I think that we, this deserves a proper discussion. I'd like to hear from staff so I get a better understanding of background with Pete of the issues from a staff perspective. I'd like to hear from staff so I get a better understanding of background with Pete of the issues from a staff perspective. Uh, I think that originally I was thinking along the lines of that me in terms of actually how staff work with the, with these to solve a problem. I think though for process sake and for keeping it on a governance level that we should take this step first and we'll go from there.
Thanks, Andy, and I'll just reiterate that, thank you for mentioning that because that is what our policy envisions is that we wouldn't be making a decision on this matter tonight. But this motion, as I see it, would be in accordance with the policy, which would refer this item to the business committee with a staff report, which will help inform us on making any potential further recommendations and decisions. Okay, anyone else wants to discuss the motion? Okay, I don't see anybody else, so I'll call the question. All in favor?
Okay, just ask me, you read?
Oh, sis, Karen, would you mind reading it one more time?
As the Board of Education of School District Number 68 and I'm Alady Smith, direct staff, provide a report to the next business committee and playfield at Gabriel Island including the current state and required areas to.
Thank you. So sorry about that. So I'll call the question again. All in favor? Karen, okay. Thank you for your presentation. So move on to our next presentation of the evening, Mr. McCann.
Thank you, Jeff. We also have ten minutes. Well, we wanted to give the folks a minute.
Yeah, you're right, just, just gonna say too. Just so you're aware, the agenda for the business committee gets published the Friday before the business committee. The business committee for October is the ninth of October.
You want us to run it for the committee?
Got the same opportunity following that particular process, so it'd be up to you to make it.
Thank you. All yours, Jeff.
Good to see you all. And you know what, I would have been here anyways, Tim. Brother, I'm really proud of you. We've come a long way since playing hockey after we're late together, right? Whole thirty-five kilometers. Good to have you here. I'll try to keep this short. I was originally here to present about the cut EA hours and fourteen point one on tonight's agenda. And as Craig pointed out, lots of thanks to Pete. And I'm sure other people working behind the scenes that I don't know about, we managed to solve it eighty percent, right, Pete? So I just wanted to clarify that. Do have twenty percent that we still, there's some piece we need to figure out, but it's gonna be through the grievance process. I'm not talking about that here. You might hear about in the future, but. I got faith, right, Pete? So, but I would like to talk about fourteen point one on the agenda and I'm sure you guys know it's about the surplus spending part of that. Just some, some comments. Number one, the local capital transfer. Pretty hard to argue about anything there. Like to acknowledge our thanks and appreciation for finance committee, especially for the Learning Studio program. I think that's a great one and the fact that it's still going and we're really happy with that. Um, the recommended expenditures. Uh, so I guess I'll go straight to the big one. Let's say EA contingency increase of one hundred fifty thousand dollars. I think Mark had pointed out it's in addition to the August twenty-eighth meeting. So it's actually about three hundred thousand dollars, you guys, right? So, um, man, who else? Thank you. That's a great first step. I mean, we always need more money. I get it. There's always much money going around. But this money is a really good step and we really thank you guys. Thank you guys for that, for just recognizing pretty major issue that is, that's really raising its head right now. So totally agree with, with that. We do have concerns about how the dollars are to be used though. In a perfect world, more staff makes a ton of sense, right? We don't have more staff. We just don't. There's nobody signing up for twenty-six hour jobs. So to get this new staff, you have to take it from our casual list. And once you do that, you're now creating failure, more failure to fail because you just don't have the people, right? So it almost becomes a phantom-like investment because you put money over here, but then you end up saving money over here and then it, it's a bit of a wash, right? So we don't think that that's actually the intent. I talked to a lot of you. We have lots of conversations about it. I listened to you at the board meetings. I think your intent is to invest in the EA's, make a much needed investment in them. And so, and we really appreciate that. You know, because our EA's, you know, they're feeling, feeling bruised, battered and burnt out already and we're twenty-four weeks in, right? Hopefully fixing this hour thing will, will heal, heal that wound that's started to, but it's been a, it's been a tough start for sports staff. You know, I'm not gonna lie. But you're, you're willing to invest in this though, it's a great step in writing some of the wrongs that happened. And this could be the biggest investment in EA's that we've seen in many, many years, right? So just get right to it. What does QP think is the best way to do this? Giving EA's more money would actually probably be the best thing. Um, staff has shown a reluctance over the years. I'm not talking about current staff. Over the years, they've shown a pretty big reluctance into looking at the EA job. And in fact, the last time the job was looked at, it's going back probably over fifteen years ago, uh, they actually put qualifications out of the job description, which in our opinion now has kept the wage artificially low. So I don't think that giving more money is gonna be feasible just the way that that is. So that's why we keep going back to adding more hours. You know, this twenty-six hours a week, it's impossible to make a living. Um, a lot of REAs, of course, have two or three jobs. I'm not telling you guys. I think you haven't heard me say for ad nauseam, right? But when we, we always hear, we hear many members of staff say, we only need EA's bell to bell. That's it. We don't need them outside the bell. And I'm really gonna argue that point. I see principals out there being crossing guards at some of the schools. Um, HR is constantly trying to find ways, oh, EA's almost three minutes over here, they're almost six minutes over here. Well, we don't need them outside the bells. And I'm kind of wondering why, why is this stuff happening, right? You know, I don't know, I've got to basically say this. Twenty-five percent of your staff are EA's. If twenty-five percent of your management's salary was based on twenty-six hour weeks, maybe you guys will start getting different answers. Then maybe we do need EA's outside the bell schedule, which would give them more hours. It would make the job more desirable because at the end, I truly believe that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to make this job more desirable. It's a challenging job, but it's a rewarding job. And, but to do it for twenty-six hours a week, just as I was driving up here, I got a picture of an EA wanting me to bring up a safety issue in the safety department and she showed me pictures, blood running down her arm from, from an incident today. So it's, there's lots of challenges and at twenty-six hours a week, it's not working. So you know, let's talk about what we get. Supervision is a big one. We get lots of reports. A lot of your EA's are working one-to-one care, which is great. But they're also being asked to generally supervise a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five kids at the same time. That's absolutely impossible. You can't do that. So you could fill some, fill some time there, put some time there. Also got crossing guards, homework clubs, EA mentorship roles. Allowing EA's to meet with the teachers outside of the bell when no students are around. I don't want to speak with teachers, but I'm pretty sure that teachers would actually like that opportunity too. Because what ends up happening is a lot of REAs hang around anyways. And now they're doing unpaid work, which, which, which just isn't fair. So this is why we're really hoping, wishing, urging ten hours of extra EA time a week for elementary schools. You know, the three hundred thousand dollars isn't gonna cut it. Um, there's some money in the wellness initiatives in the circle of spending. Um, because you know what the best wellness initiative is? You know what? Let's give your, your employees the investment that they need to be able to do a good job. That's the best wellness that you get. Now they're feeling good about their job. They're feeling respected. So I do believe that the money is there. But you know, I think you guys get the picture. I want to thank you guys, all, all the trustees. I want to thank the finance department. Um, this has been a lot of years we've been banging the table about the realms of your days, right? It's, you know, it's about the short, shortness of hours of EA's. So here we are and you guys are willing to put some money towards it and we really, really appreciative of that. You know, it gets frustrating because a lot of times we see shareholders get shrugged and say, well, everybody's dealing with this issue. I don't think that's the answer. I think you guys are actually proving that you know, you can tackle these issues. And even if this is just the first step, um, it's a pretty good first step. So thanks for listening to me, I really hope the motion passes and I hope the money is used in the most effective way.
I think she was.
Are there any questions for, I have a question. How old's Tanya?
Um, but sorry, you mentioned some other things besides, you know, adding an hour and one was the mentorship roles. But I'm really sure if I heard that correctly.
Yeah, well, just, um, you got some, but you know, a lot of our experience, the EA's, and we have a lot of new, you know, new people coming in, right? So maybe there's something that they can figure out. I haven't figured out all the details. I was just trying to throw out different ideas. Because of course we want to work within the factory agreement, right? And we don't want to cross any lines as far as what teachers knows. So I was just kind of just trying to throw some ideas out and that has been thrown out at our executive meetings, talking about different EA mentorship roles. I don't want the teachers to deal with it with some type of mentorship. Yeah, so I don't know, I don't know if it'd be total parallel to that, but it was just another idea that we.
Thank you very much.
Andy?
Thank you. Uh, through the chair, Jeff, you mentioned something about taking something out of this job description and you're talking about, are you suggesting a need for a new evaluation of the actual job? Of the role of the EA or?
Yeah, and that's, yeah, um, sorry, I guess it's true, yes. So what they, and again, this is way back, well, fifteen, fifteen years ago. Uh, they took it, um, experience out of the job description or job qualifications. And everybody knows JE, um, knowledge and experience are your top two weighted items in the JE of the job, sorry, job evaluation. So that's a big heavy weight. So that's actually why we had a QP in the district kind of had a fight about practical reasons. Because if you took the, took the role of saying, well, if experience isn't as important, isn't important, then you don't need our EA's to pass on any experience because it's not important. So, but we, I'm lucky to fix that.
No, I'm sorry to be clear.
So we have brought up with a couple of different day management meetings in previous years about how we can do this because we can't do it, in our opinion, we can't do it the way we do a regular job. So if you have a department, say eight people, and they do other jobs change, there's a process, right? They go to the supervisor, he has to do a job review, they sit down, this is where a job looks like. We don't know how to do that within EA because the EA role is so massive. So we've always kind of, you know, we, it's been throwback and it's, oh, just do it the regular way. It's like, are we really gonna let one principal and one EA dictate, you know, define what the entire job is? We don't know what it looks like. I wouldn't want to make it too cumbersome, but I see at least three or four EA's and three or four principals and some staff really working together to get a definitive definition of what that job is. Because, and I think it's overdue, but I also think it's a lot of work and it's nothing we're gonna get done in this career. Sorry.
No, no, I think you, yeah, you've helped me.
Right, Tom?
Yeah, yeah.
So the chair, I need a couple of questions of information. Mark, how many, sorry, Secretary Treasurer? How many student, what's our student enrollment rate now? It's all, it's fifteen, three.
I'll take it.
Okay, I'm gonna have to, about fifteen and a half. Fifteen and a half, thank you. And what's our current FDE for teachers? That's probably more complicated.
Gonna have to take that one.
Okay, all right. How many EA's do we have in our schools?
Well, it's demanding. It's always, it's always talking, you're talking about casuals and that too. We usually, we usually roughly say we figure about half our QPs, what is our staff is EA's? And so we're looking at somewhere three, three fifty.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry to just ask for these broad numbers. I only really need the broad terms because what I think about is I think about our strategic plan. And I think about the idea that one of our, the primary objectives in our strategic plan is to create a safe and healthy work environment for our students. And we itemize doing that by making sure that every student has one or two adults that care about them. And so for me, at a certain point, and thank you very much for all the numbers, this kind of comes down to a math game. That how are we gonna actually have these kids making connections with people if they're not on site? If they're not allowed to be in the flex time, if they're not allowed to be in the, keeping the libraries open, if they're not allowed to be in the, you know, where kids are. Um, so I thank you for bringing the presentation and I will be thinking about the importance of our keeping members and trying to meet strategic goal of making sure that all of our students, all fifteen and a half thousand of them, connect to one or two kids. You do the math, we need more people. Thank you. Great, thank you. Um, everyone's had a chance to ask questions, so I'm gonna say thank you, Jeff.
Thank you. Have a free time.
Okay, so we move on to item twelve correspondence. So just as a reminder, with correspondence, and we have procedures under policy that give us four options on what to do with correspondence. The first is to be received and filed. Uh, second is to refer to the board chair for a response. Third is to refer to staff for a response. And the fourth is to refer to a standing committee meeting. Uh, so the first item of correspondence under twelve point one is from M Tremblay and regarding cell phones in schools, there's a suggested motion.
Then the Board of Education of School District Number 68 and I'm Alady Smith, refer to correspondence from M Tremblay to staff for a response.
Yeah, you have a second there? Seconded by Chantel, any discussion? Mark?
Thanks, Joe. I have a quick question. Sometimes with these correspondence letters, we have staff responding and sometimes we have the, the chair responding. I'm a little curious, why do we switch it up?
Uh, my understanding is if it's more operational in nature and the staff would respond. If it's more at the board level, uh, policy, strategic plan, then we would respond to the chair. Here, can I, do you have anything, Dan?
Just that's, each letter is discussed at the agenda setting committee to ensure that the recommendation aligns with that split of responsibilities. So occasionally we might get it wrong and you go, oh, we'll actually rather have it go a different direction. Um, which is why obviously the board has to pass the motion, but that's where the recommendation stands.
But the board could just switch it up, the app society. Okay, thank you, thank you, Chair. Any other discussion? Okay, I'll see any other discussion. So I'll call the question. All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you.
But again, just, just, um, for trustee here, so you're aware, whenever there's a letter that gets sent to the board and staff is the responder or the chair is the responder, the responses are also posted publicly. So the trustees don't get individually copied on them. We get a lot of correspondence, but if you have something you're particularly interested in, you can go to our website and you'll see the response that gets sent to the individual.
Thanks, Mark. So move on to twelve point two, our second set of correspondence from Minister of Education and Childcare, Rashna Singh.
Uh, the Board of Education of School District Number 68 and I'm Alady Smith, refer the correspondence from the Minister of Education and Childcare Rashna Singh to be received and filed.
Yep, we have seconded her. Seconded by Chantel. Any discussion? A question, all in favor? Moving on to twelve point three correspondence from T Coyle regarding public after-school care.
The Board of Education of School District Number 68 and I'm Alady Smith, refer the correspondence from T Coyle to the board chair for response.
Thank you. We have seconded her. Seconded by, yeah. Discussion. We have not, sorry. I didn't get that. We'll discuss them, we'll call a question. All in favor? Moving on to new business under thirteen point one. The audited financial statements and financial statement discussion and analysis. Mark?
Great, thank you Chair and good evening, everyone. Uh, online this evening are our auditors from KPMG. Uh, and so, so the public is aware, our auditors do attend a closed session meeting that allows the board the opportunity to kind of dig in deep if there's concerns about, uh, you know, security or audit, audit purposes that wouldn't be appropriate for a public meeting. And then we bring the auditors back to kind of go over the financial statements. And so trustees don't dig into the questions that they're saving to the public that, that are appropriate for public consumption. Uh, and so, so there's already been a bit of a look. We will say that the analysis of the session document, we did present the last meeting, but again, it was, the idea is take your time to digest it over the next little bit. So we're, we're maybe coming to the board. We'll have our auditors here to look at the financial statements and have a bit of discussion. And then we have the finance team here to answer questions in addition to what the auditors might be to provide. So, uh, again, I, before they come on, I do want to take a moment. We had a clean audit and I do want to express my appreciation for our finance team for the amazing work that they do in putting this together. And then maybe turn it over to Lenora and Cameron to, to present.
Great, thank you. Uh, thanks for having us at your meeting here tonight as well as the discussion we're able to have in our. Uh, thanks for having us at your meeting here tonight, as well as the discussion we're able to have in our closed session. Uh, Cameron is the engagement manager on this audit, who's been involved for a number of years. And, uh, I'll provide a summary of the audit findings for you tonight. Um, as mentioned, overall, we are substantially complete the audit. And as drafted, the auditor's report is a clean and unqualified opinion on the accuracy and reasonability of the financial statements. We have not detected any uncorrected audit adjustments that we consider to be material. And as a result, um, our audit opinion indicates that these financial statements present fairly in accordance with the rules that the school district is required to follow, which include public sector accounting standards, as well as Budget Transparency and Accountability Act regulations, uh, that are, um, put out by the Ministry of Finance. Um, in terms of our audit areas of focus, those were identified as, um, revenues, capital assets, procurement and payroll and other expenses. In these areas, we perform a number of different audit procedures, including confirmation directly with the ministry has two amounts that they have on their records, um, to agree and match to what the school district has in its records. We also perform procedures over, um, analytical review, for example, comparison of actual expenses and revenues to budget as well as prior year. And then we also review a number of invoices, for example, related to capital asset additions, paid payments to contractors, um, as well as verifying the timing of transactions that those are recorded in the appropriate fiscal year. Um, as a result of those procedures, we did not identify any corrected audit differences. Um, and that is testament to the high quality of records of the finance team during the course of the year, that there was no recommended numerical changes between the very first draft of, um, financial statements we received to the final draft that's included in your package tonight. Uh, there's two minor uncorrected audit differences that are not new in the current fiscal year. Um, one relates to presentation of a budget, which is prevalent throughout many school districts in the province in that the amended budget is used as a basis of comparison and more accurate information, uh, compared to an original budget based on estimated enrollment numbers. Uh, we've also identified a couple of minor control observations and recommendations specifically related to capital, um, not day-to-day operations. And these are, um, you know, non-cash types of transactions. For example, the ongoing monitoring of asset retirement obligations, um, as the cost to remediate may increase in the future, incorporating a potential inflationary impact to those estimates. And then we also noted a potential opportunity for enhanced efficiency around the allocation of salaries to particular capital costs on a more frequent and accurate basis. Overall, the audit process was very clean. Uh, we received the full support of the finance team in all of our questions and were able to complete it, um, on, on time and, uh, with no significant issues. So our, uh, our appreciation as well to the finance team for all of the support in this process. In terms of the financial statements themselves, um, as mentioned, the financial statement discussion and analysis document is a really good summary of many pages of ministry-required financial reporting. Um, it does include, um, a few more user-friendly charts as to financial metrics, as well as an explanation of the trends, um, on a year-over-year basis, as well as budget to actual. A couple of the highlights I'll just mention briefly here, uh, total financial assets at the end of the year were just over fifty-two million. So that represents either cash in the bank or items that can be converted into cash. For example, receivables from the ministry, um, or G I Cs. Uh, that balance increased about four, four and a half million this year, primarily due to grants that were received later in the year. And as a result, had not been fully expended at the end of this fiscal year. Total liabilities were two hundred and twenty-three million. And this is mostly made up of grants, all types operating special purpose in capital, uh, that either have not been spent or have been spent on capital and are being recognized as revenue over time. Uh, a similar increase here in the liability, um, representing capital grants, uh, received during fiscal twenty-four but not yet fully expended at the end of the year. The non-financial assets includes mostly capital assets and that balance is about two hundred and seventeen million at the end of the year, an increase from two hundred and eleven million last year. The change year-over-year includes capital additions of about sixteen million, offset by amortization of eleven million. There was a number of capital projects during the year and capital additions that are described in the, in the financial statement discussion and analysis, including completion and progress on childcare facilities, H VAC ventilation, uh, purchase of electric buses and, um, various building improvements. In terms of revenues and expenses for the year, overall, the school district had a surplus of two point three million. Um, total revenues this year were two hundred and twelve million, an increase of twenty million year-over-year. That is in large part due to increase in enrollment, as well as an increase in per pupil grant amount, or if it relates to international students, an increase in the rate. Uh, during the year, there was also an, um, a consistent amount of earnings in interest income. So while interest rates remained quite strong and positive and with cash in the bank, the school district generated about one point seven million of interest income this year. Total expenses for the year were two hundred and nine million and that represents an increase of seventeen million year-on-year. Approximately sixteen million of that increase is attributable to salaries, both increase in wage rate as well as positions. And then the remainder of the increase relates to a combination of supplies, utilities and operating costs. For example, the cost to move portables. Lastly, there was a small increase in amortization expense as the capital assets and capital base of the school district continues to grow, uh, resulting in more amortization costs year-over-year. So as mentioned, that resulted in a surplus of two point three million and an accumulated surplus of forty-five million. Note thirteen to the financial statements describes the composition of that accumulated surplus. Most of it has actually already been spent on capital assets, about thirty million. So accumulated surplus includes the school district's net investment in capital assets, which is the largest component of your accumulated surplus. The remaining components include an operating surplus of eleven point five million and the various restrictions attached to that are also included in note thirteen. And a capital, uh, surplus of four point two million, also described, um, within note thirteen. Those were the highlights I wanted to touch on in the financial statements and happy to address any questions on either our report or the statements.
Thank you very much, Lenora. Trustees, are there any questions?
Let me just add a couple of points, um, that I think are really important with respect to the F S D A particularly associated with, uh, this is that this document, uh, I want, the public and I want trustees to kind of keep this document in the back pocket because this is a great reference to where we're at in the variety of things that we're working on and it gives a good sense, sense of things. Um, so you can see the great success stories that come out in a board, you know, a financial document will show the amazing work that we're managing to achieve in a variety of places. A couple of things, and I know a lot of what Lenora is pointing out is, you know, so much of it is driven by the ministry and the funding formula, but there are impacts that this board, from a financial perspective, is having on our financial position directly. International education is one, um, that is driving revenue that's separate and apart from what the ministry would be doing. But on the capital side too, I just want to take a moment to acknowledge, uh, one, the board and two, our facility staff. So on page twenty-four of the, uh, of the report, but page forty-four of the agenda, there's a couple of, uh, uh, points that I think are important. One is we, as a reminder, we came in significantly under budget on both Solair and Pleasant Valley when we upgraded those facilities. And so now we have a capital, a restricted capital balance of two point seven million dollars sitting in our bank. We need permission from the ministry to be able to use that. But when they come knock on our door and they say, you need to contribute to Lady Smith Intermediates, you know, they installed or whatever it's going to look like, that's the, one of the first places that the board can access. And that's directly because we managed to, you know, manage those contracts in a way of, you know, make sure that our risk reserves were appropriate, that they were on time and under budget, which in this world is pretty difficult. So huge success there. And the other one to notice, and it's, we're already far behind, um, you know, in the number, but if you look at land, this board took the steps and directed us to get going with a school set acquisition charge. And so you can see that was three hundred and fifty thousand dollars sitting there that wasn't there. So those are three examples of levers that we have as a local district to impact our, you know, net positive financial position. I just want to point those out, but again, happy to answer any questions generally, um, but just the mark of the, of that.
You, Mark? Trustees, do you have any questions?
Oh, yeah, thank you, Chair. Um, you know, as the average person gets elected to office, I don't have been through a lot of audits, so my like, um, you know, it's kind of something that we all dread and don't look forward to whatever happens to us personally. And, uh, and it can be pretty intimidating, but you know, I've been sitting here for a couple of years and we just keep on having these great people coming in and saying that our staff are doing a great job and that there's no threats, there's no risks. I, I just don't want to take this good work for granted. I'm sure there's other organizations and other, even other school districts in the province right now that, that don't get to rely on this kind of solid footing. So, um, as someone who really doesn't know what they're talking about, thank you very much for doing such a good job.
Okay. Just learning curve together.
I'm not getting to, not getting to the top of the audit curve, right? I think that's someone else's job.
All right, so, go ahead.
The Board of Education of School District number sixty-eight, and I'm a Lady Smith, receive and approve the twenty twenty-three dash twenty twenty-four audit financial statement.
It's fabulous, second there, it's everybody told. Any discussion?
Thanks, Chair. I, I just want to acknowledge appreciation, the fact that in a world where public bodies often spend over their budget and we have two examples here where it was under budget. I mean, when it goes over budget, it gets reported, when it gets under budget, uh, it kind of goes under the, under the carpet, right? So good job to staff, good job, Mark and, and everyone in, uh, the department from, uh, Tony at it all the way through. So, um, yeah, good footing and I'll support the motion, thank you.
And not so many more hands, so I'll call a question, all those in favor? On to thirteen point two, the board angle, uh, Mark?
Thank you, Chair. So, Mark, here's another, trustee Robyn, here's another example where we've, we rolled the dice to see who's going to present all this. So the, the work plan is required, um, under the board's policy two point five on a yearly basis. Uh, and so the idea of the work plan is it reflects both, uh, in statutory requirements, so tonight we had to pass the financial statements. There's times we have to pass the budget. So there's things that are going to be there no matter what because they're, they're obligated to be there. And then what you'll see in this is that the, the work plan is the outcome of the board working together along with, uh, with this, the senior team to identify where, and then particularly in respect to the education committee, is where the, you know, the accountability, here's where we're going to be reporting on a variety of data points. So the board is able to connect directly to strategic plan and they can anticipate what's coming. So you don't have to put up your hand to wonder when we're going to hear about how we're doing in numeracy. You look forward and it's March. And so this also is a bit of an invitation to staff to remind trustees on occasion, nope, that's coming, we'll, we'll, we'll actually have you hold off. And then of course, there's a variety of issues, transportation, uh, uh, things like that. So this is going to guide the board's work, uh, that, and all trustees have had an, had input. Of course, emerging items inevitably are going to arise and will add to, to this list. But, uh, I think it's reflective of what we've heard and our obligations, recommended motion is there.
I might just add to, you'll come to in a second, um, um, that this is, um, really handy document for trustees and for the community to know what the boards up to. Um, but also, you know, with respect to the work that we're doing, uh, I think it's important that we hold ourselves accountable to this work. And, you know, um, we come up with any additional projects, have to consider those, uh, against all the other things that the board's agreed to do next year as well. So hoping that this will help to continue, help to keep us on track and, you know, this stuff, should everyone's input into this process. So I've got two people, I've got Naomi and then Cameron.
I was just going to be watching, I'm actually.
Okay, what, then?
Uh, I'm just wondering what the board's feeling to be around. In October, we have provincial council agenda and then we have emerging issues. I basically, I'll take a step back. I had a meeting with Vista Bank, around school trustees executive on Sunday. And if anyone has motions that they want to bring forward for A G M that they want to be done jointly with B C S T A, they want that brought forward to Academy, which means we would have to discuss it prior to Academy, which is in November. So I'm wondering if we could have some kind of reminder in the work plan about that in October? And if we could do it without a motion, we could just make it a friendly amendment or, uh, next to maybe provincial council or, yeah. Or the October board, shiny, uh, and end of the month of resurging.
Yeah, I mean, I think that would go for all of the reminders for motions that, um, to receive for the C S D A.
Yes.
We can add that, we don't have the motion.
Yes.
That's what's on there. Can you go ahead and speak the motion? Do you want to speak first?
Um, I'm just, uh, wondering, we, as policy committee, we had talked about our policy, uh, work plan, but, uh, agenda work plan. Is that going to go for business committee or paper?
I believe so, yeah.
Yeah, so we have our, we have the policy committee on Friday.
Yes.
The agenda's been sent out for that and the idea was rather than send the draft tonight, that the policy committee can make its recommendation to the business committee, then the board would pass it, uh, in October. Ideally, ideally, all the other committee work plans will get appended to the board work plans around the, right? So all of the work out before, and to advise the board, it will be part of the same budget.
Okay, Naomi.
Uh, the Board of Education of School District number sixty, and I'm a Lady Smith, adopt the board's two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five, and the work plan.
Hey, there's a second there, yeah? Would you like to motivate this one, over?
I think we, we, like you mentioned earlier, uh, Mark did, that, you know, this was a combined effort and, uh, yeah. To appropriate.
Okay, any discussion? So any discussions, I'll call a question, all in favor? There it is, thank you. Moving on to committee reports. Yeah, and you have a big draw with any news tonight. You want to start with the first one?
All right, that the Board of Education of School District number sixty-eight, and I'm a Lady Smith, approve the eleven recommendations for the reopening of Rutherford Elementary, including the redrawn boundaries and transfer of students to the newly created Rutherford and Prince Junior Backs.
Thank you, and if you have a second there? I have now. How would you like to move into the motion?
Chair, um, I think that this is the next step in getting rid of portables in the North End, which is fantastic news for everyone. I don't think it will come without, um, slight, um, angst for some parents and some students, but I do feel that this is, we've done the best that we can do, um, for the students, um, of the North End by reopening Rutherford.
Thank you, okay, any other discussion? Any hands, so I'll call a question, all in favor? Here it is.
Great, that the Board of Education of School District number sixty-eight, and I'm a Lady Smith, direct staff to provide response to the city of Naimo with respect to the Bayards District rezoning application. That the district anticipates it will be able to support student enrollment associated with that project.
Second there? Three? Would you like to motivate?
Uh, I think this is just a standard response based on the plan that the city has provided in regards to this, um, rezoning application. It's, it's a long way out, but, um, to do our due diligence, uh, we have to approve this motion.
Discussion, Mark?
Through you to staff, uh, just for the benefit of, uh, those present, could, could you? could, could you let us know where the Vowers District rezoning is?
Sure. The Vowers is the green thumb, the green thumb property.
Follow up. This goes, thank you, Mark. This just goes to show why we need to reopen Rutherford because it's in the area and it's not only that area, but it's, there are so many different parcels. There are apartment buildings getting built and have built and surprised, there's kids in there. We're not traditionally in the R. So we're in a situation where we're in a bit, right, around some ranges, you know, pretty full. So absolutely support the motion on the basis that we're reopening Rutherford. Otherwise, we probably would not support it as much. Thanks.
Thanks, Mark. Any other discussion? So all questions, all in favor?
Great. That the Board of Education of School District Number Sixty-Eight, Nanaimo Lady Smith, approved the recommended two thousand twenty-four dash two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six, two thousand twenty-seven multi-year financial plan.
A second.
Much appreciation to our finance department, Tanya and team that have presented very detailed, easy to read with very, you know, the graphics and the backgrounds and the explanations that make it simple for not only us, but for the average individual to be able to look at those statements and realize all of the moving pieces that come with that.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say I support this motion, of course. I'd like to thank staff particularly for helping me to understand this document and the purpose of it because I, my initial reluctance or nervousness was, we getting locked into something here? It only that it wasn't having any flexibility. And I really appreciate the explanation of, no, we're not. It's just a sort of a overview and. Yeah. So with that, I'm, I'm quite pleased to support this.
Who wants to? Then I'll call the question. All in favor?
That Board of Education of School District Number Sixty-Eight, Nanaimo Lady Smith, received the executive compensation report as information and direct the board chair to sign the assertion letter acknowledging compensation aid to executive staff during the two thousand twenty-three dash two thousand twenty-four fiscal year. Just that this is a standard document that every school district has to provide and approve. Doing our due diligence.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Got a question, all in favor? Who cares?
That Board of Education of School District Number Sixty, Nanaimo Lady Smith, approved the recommendations contained in the action sheet dated September eleventh, two thousand twenty-four to allocate the unrestricted surplus to support the board's goals.
A second. Yeah.
The action sheet outlines specific areas in regards to our strategic plan in order to use our surplus to benefit the people in our system to the best that we can. And I'm glad that we're in a surplus situation. So I think it's good, you know, it's always great to put more money back into the system. And it's also great to have this money go to the students today while they're here.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Thanks, Chair. I, I initially wasn't going to support this motion. I'm changing my two based largely on the accountability at the start. So that's a good start and I'm, I'm okay with supporting this.
I would also like to acknowledge folks that I was coming into this meeting thinking I'd be able to support this motion and knowing that we made the promise we have in our EA issues, I am going to support that. And as a gesture to, well, let me rephrase that. I would love to still see even more changes around our EA issues. And one of the things I've learned in this role over the last ten years is you can't make the perfect man, maybe good. So I, I appreciate the efforts made by staff. I commit for my, our next budget process and hoping that this is something for Robin to hear is that we will have deeper conversations around some of the matters brought up in the presentation we had earlier so that we can continue to look at how we can better serve students who are most vulnerable. And at this point, this is the best thing we can, best way to go about it. I remember, another thing I remember for my first time, my first year on the board is somebody wanted to do something. I said, it's, now is not the time to do that. You can't use a hacksaw when you want to use a scalpel or what, you know, you have to, you, we have to be precise with these things. So at this point, this is the right way to go.
Thank you, Chair.
I'm, I'm going to support the motion. My colleagues did a lot of kind of what I've, I've been thinking as well. And I'm, I'm looking forward to having some funds as well for this and the health and wellness for our staff, given their as well. I, I appreciate the thoughtfulness in regards to where those funds, that surplus will go to, understanding that we might not have that surplus next year, they might have to take those things away. But if we can have a good foundation started with some of these funds now, we might not necessarily need those funds or hopefully we can get extra funds so that we can roll that into an ongoing program. Some great stuff might come out of this that could go for long term. So I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing what comes out of it and I will support this motion.
Thank you. Naomi, that's good.
Yes, I, I support this motion as well and I had a, some reservations prior to the announcement to me as well. So I'm very grateful that we were able to, to resolve that. And as Chantel said, trustee Morvay, I said, you know, that looking at the, the unrestricted surplus to be able to support our board goals, I'm really looking forward to, particularly as Chantel mentioned, the wellness, mental wellness. And so, yeah, I wholeheartedly support this motion.
And I'll just say, first of all, I'm very pleased to be in a position that we have a surplus. But I think, you know, that's number one, something to be grateful for. And I'm glad that we were able to make the investments that everyone recommended throughout the district. Without that surplus, we'd be having a much different conversation right now. So I'll be supporting the motion and I'm glad that we were able to be in this kind of financial position to be able to reinvest that back into the district. So thank you. But yes.
I don't see any other hands, so I'll call the question. All in favor? Last one.
True. Who approved that agenda?
Board of Education of School District Number Sixty-Eight, Nanaimo Lady Smith, adopt policy childcare services and early years programs as an. Just that the policy didn't need an update just based on the new programs that we have. And I think it just outlines it more clearly for individuals who are in the system in relation to these programs.
Thank you. Any discussion? Any discussion, no more questions, all in favor? Thank you, Leanna. I'm through. Let's be a record. So move on to the education committee. Chantel.
Great. Less to do, I think. It's awesome. Well, a lot of good work. That's Board of Education of School District Number Sixty-Eight, Nanaimo Lady Smith, amend the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-eight strategic plan as shown in the education committee's action sheet dated September fourth, two thousand twenty-four.
Second. Do you like to motivate the motion?
I really appreciate that, that change. It was more of a switch in, in our wording. And I feel like it, it helps clarify what it is that we're trying, that we were trying to to elaborate on when it comes to reconciliation. I think it kind of flows better and people can understand it better the way that it was changed. So any motion?
Any discussion? Now, a follow-up question. All in favor? Very. Back over to Chantel.
That the Board of Education of School District Number Sixty-Eight, Nanaimo Lady Smith, approve the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four enhancing student learning report and submit to the Ministry of Education and Childcare by September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four.
Second. Do you like to motivate Chantel?
I think we had a good fulsome discussion when it's presented to the committee. Appreciate all that information. I actually really appreciate how it's laid out. It's very accessible. It's a lot of plain language. It's easy to kind of parse out what's going on. And I really appreciate that report here because it's a big report. Anybody who hasn't read it yet, they, they should. I think it's important information. And it's what we're really now going to be working with going forward.
Okay, any discussion? But I think I stopped talking to you previously enough to.
Just a quick comment to, again, thanks, the departmental services team. Somebody I did, sat in the, you know, the peer review meetings of these, these enhanced due by reports. I know how much work goes into them. I know how many hours. And the focus in the body of that report that you received last, last month was, is, is fantastic. And we're really excited by the vision. It has a lot of the great ideas that were put forward in that report. And I again encourage everybody to, particularly the idea of the operational plans for departments. I, I think that will really help, help the district with it.
Yeah.
Kind of reiterate a little bit of what my colleagues have said, but I appreciate the formatting of this, but I also appreciate that it gives us a clear picture of where we're at, where we've, where we've come from and where we need to go, which is really exciting with our new strategic plan and our focus on numeracy and literacy. I'm really looking forward to watching this report over the next few years to see the changes positively for our students in our district. And I'm really hoping that the investments we're making really shine through in our students' achievement.
Ten. I was just going to say the strat plan, the work plan and the learning report. It's a, it was sort of music to my ears. It was something that was really exciting for me to look at. So just observing the hard work that's sort of gone into creating those three documents and obviously that data report, I know I've shared it many times with my campaign around looking at that to, to guide what we have to do here as, as a unit, you know? So I'm excited to use that data moving forward and how we could, how it's going to change and improve over the years. So again, just to mention that.
Thanks, Chantel. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor? Who cares? Okay. So there's no senior staff reports or unfinished business. So for information, we have the board motion report on page one hundred and eighty-eight and the trustee committee reports starting on page one hundred and ninety-one. Don't believe there's any questions, but I'll just confirm. Any questions this evening? So a motion to adjourn. We'll move by, Naomi, seconded by Tom. All in favor? Very. Thanks very much. We have to stick around. Oh, I know why.